The walking, or the talking stick at the last meeting of council. I have it again here on the desk and display of our commitment towards our, the relation, the strong relationship that we have with the Aboriginal people of the area. And this walking stick was presented to me a number of months ago by the Aboriginal, by Aboriginals in our area. And as a sign of that relationship, I will have it again, as this is Aboriginal Awareness Month in Kingston. And the other thing I just wanted to point out to all of council and members of the public is that this Sunday is the official grand opening of Lake Ontario Park. And there will be lots to do for all family members and food. And I believe that even Mr. Nice Cream has been invited to bring his truck to Lake Ontario Park. So please join us on Sunday afternoon, I believe, starting at from 1 till 3 o'clock. Yes, 1 till 3. We do have some added that have been distributed this evening, a motion of condolence, as well as some delegation, a presentation, and a report, report number 86. Will somebody move those? Counselor Downs and Counselor Berg? Is there any discussion on that? I'll then call to question on that, please. Please vote. Next is disclosure of potential pecuniary interest. Is there any to declare? Counselor Downs?
Thank you, your worship. Two disclosures. From 4 June 2013, I Rick Downs of the Council, the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motions number one and number two, in that I am an employee of the Limestone District School Board. And secondly, 18 June 2013, report number 85, a closed meeting, in that I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Kingston Community Health Centers.
Are there any others to declare? I will declare potential pecuniary interest with respect to clause two, report 88 from the Planning Committee, in that I own property within the vicinity of the subject land. So moving on to the next item, I will now go to the presentations. And at this time, I would like to ask Vicky Keith to come forward. It's a great absolute honor to have the opportunity to do this with city council present. Last Saturday, I was pleased to be part of a celebration that honored 25 years since Vicky Keith swam across all five Great Lakes within a two-month period. And at that time, I presented Vicky with a citation from council, as well as a key to the city. And I thought it would be appropriate to, with council's presence, present this key to her once again, and this time you get to take it home with you. This is the second time that Vicky has received a key to the city for this amazing accomplishment. The first time was 25 years ago. But I think this particular occasion is not just to recognize the fact that it's been 25 years, but also, and more importantly, to recognize the amazing contribution that Vicky has given to our community since, in those 25 years. Vicky is a huge advocate of getting, in particular physically disabled children, or disabled children generally speaking, involved in sport. And it is, at least I know for a fact, as I know that all members of council do, that it is because of people like Vicky that make our amazing community what it is, and tremendously adds to the quality of life that we have in Kingston. And I would be remiss if I didn't also mention your husband, John, because I know that he is the ultimate guy behind the girl in this, in this case, or guy behind the woman, I should say. But you'll go with girl? Okay. I was gonna say 25 years. You must have been about eight years old when you did it the first time. But nonetheless, it's an absolute pleasure to present you, Vicky, with this official key to the city, in recognition of the great contribution that you've given to our community throughout the years. Thank you very much. Would you like to say something? I don't think I have. Sorry, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot there. With that, I'll move to the delegations. And we have one delegation, Mr. Rich Allen of the Kingston Coalition for Active Transportation, who will speak to council in regards to new motion number one, proposal of a plan to increase the number of bicycle racks around the, around municipal buildings. Our delegations are allotted five minutes. Mr. Allen?
Hi there. First of all, my name's Rich. I am, I'm from Kingston. I'm a cyclist, a biker. I use bikes. I live in Glenbernie, so I'm countryside resident, yes. And I bike in from Glenbernie. So I'm the exception when it comes to biking. I'm a little extreme, because the roads are still kind of fast out there. So, but I'm here to talk about not cycling, but places to go with your bike when you get there. And part of that is, part of a motion that's coming here with, for the city to put facilities around the municipal buildings. And I think that something that gets left behind when we talk about cycling infrastructure is that we talk about bike lanes a lot, and dedicated bike lanes a lot, but we don't actually talk about where to securely store our bikes when we get to wherever we're going, whether it be our place of employment, our city hall, our public buildings that we use. We all want to feel that our piece of transportation is safe when we leave it behind and out of sight. So just in this photo here, I'm just, this is a demonstration of a, of a place that's outside of Boston. It's a, it's a light rail transit place, and they have a, they have cameras on here, as well as relatively secure, because there are people coming and going, or commuters, so there's a bit of visualization. So the bikes are safe from the weather here, for the most part, unless it's a heavy hurricane-like wind. And they get on the light rail transit to go into the city. And that's sort of an example of a mass place to park your place. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the barriers for commuting that have to do with this. So really quickly, when people get on a bike, or don't get on a bike, it's because of the next few reasons. One, safety. Everybody feels, and we know this already, that there's a feeling that they're not safe on the road with cars. And that's something that we're working on. Weather. I, I live in Glenbernie. I drive when the weather is not on my side. I can't bike every day. Distance. I live in Glenbernie. I am probably the, one of four people who think about biking from Glenbernie, but most, that's outside of the normal. It's gotta be within the city that people are biking when it comes to distance. Fashion. This is, when you think of a cyclist, you think of this, this fellow here, brightly colored, ready to go. That makes it unattractive to cycle. This is the kind of guy I would like to see cycling. In Kingston, I would say the number one deterrent for anyone downtown is theft, or perception of theft. A lot of people feel that their bikes aren't secure, left unattended in Kingston. This has been spoken about at the university. There are studies and polls and surveys that have come out of the university with university students. And most of the reason they don't ride their bikes is they have no secure place to store their bike, either at home, in residence, or once they get to school. And so that is a huge barrier to cycling. The other thing is convenience. Where can you conveniently park your bike? Well, I'm sure you've all seen the tree that this bike is parked to. Many, many trees get used as bike parking facilities, because there's nothing more convenient or better to use in their area. This is parking infrastructure that's poorly done. So if you're looking for parking infrastructure, and you're looking to implement some parking infrastructure around the municipal buildings, please don't do this, or this. The bike can't go through, because there's a wall on the other side, so it doesn't really work very adequately. This is an interesting piece of, your bike lock's supposed to go through that little hole, and it better fit your, your bike as well. So please, don't implement this either. But parking also, I think this is sort of a representative, the mayor came in to the roll, roll-in breakfast during commuter challenge week, and if any of you were there, you will remember there were bikes just scattered all over Market Square, because there was nowhere else to put them. And so that kind of gives us a sense of, you know, there can be a lot of cyclists with bikes who need a place to go, and it's very easy. This, this was an event in Ottawa, and people, I pulled this off Twitter, Bike Rack Fail hashtag. And this person couldn't find a place to park her bike, because there was only the one rack, and so she left. So that's the problem with bike parking in town. Really quickly, there's two types of bike parking. The short term, we have a lot of that in Kingston. We should get more of that in Kingston. These are the ring and posts, or the inverted U's that you see. They're casually secure, because they're in high pedestrian areas. They're free, 30 seconds. Oh, okay. I shouldn't have introduced myself. So what I want to talk about really quick, so we've seen these, they can be turned into art pieces, but what, this is what I would want to leave you with, this image here. This is what most places, workplaces should gun for. This is a bike room inside the building, possibly with a camera, with lockers, maybe showers, maybe not, that people can feel secure with their $500 or $1,000 bike, that they can bike into work with and feel secure.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Downs?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to see you here. I want to ask you about bikes that have been locked to bike racks that have been abandoned. In other words, they take up a parking space forever, because they got the kryptonite lock on it. And you see them in Toronto all the time, with the tires are, you know, stamped down, but you do see them around Kingston. What, what do, in your experience, what do other municipalities do about those bikes that have been abandoned?
Yeah, so often, many municipalities will have their bylaw officers, maybe the folks who do traffic ticketing or parking for cars. When they see a bike that has been abandoned, or, or definitely the ones that are damaged and abandoned, they flag it with a notice saying, "This bike has two weeks," and then it will be forcibly removed. And then the city removes it with, you can just, just a hand grinder will cut through those kryptonite. You just need to plug it in.
Second question is related to taking a parking space for a car and converting it into bike parking. What do you think of that?
I think that's great. I think in Kingston, that's something that, it might be more feasible, considering we have somewhat limited sidewalk space in terms of pedestrian areas. You can fit 10 bicycles into a car parking space. There are ones that look like cars that are bike racks, that you can get an example of. And so it's been done in other places, often strategically near a corner, so that cars or cyclists can also see around that corner, because there's not a car parked there. Yeah.
Counselor Neal?
Thank you. I know Guelph, which is a community we're often compared to demographically, they have, I've seen, some very nice roofed areas where people can safely leave their bikes out of the, out of the weather. Have you come across those? Do you?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the bike parking in Guelph. I spent some time working in Guelph when I worked with Katimovic. And in the winter, students who bike year-round, those are fantastic. And you could feasibly put a camera, a remote camera, Wi-Fi camera in there, to make it slightly more secure, in terms of feeling knowledgeable about that. But I feel like sometimes the expense for the ability to park is not always worth, because it's not the most secure compared to one of those rooms, right? So it's a, it's a bit of a trade-off. It's a nice thing to have covered parking, but more parking is probably better than covered parking, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for taking the time.
No problem.
Next, briefings. Sheldon Layman, Director of Housing for the City of Kingston, Pope of Armour, President and CEO for United Way, are going to speak to council in regards to information report three, received from Commissioner of Community Services, the Community Poverty Reduction Plan Update. Our briefings are, per our bylaw, hi, limited to, oh, Hersh Sadever, are you part of this too?
I'm part of it.
Oh, you're not in the agenda, but I'm sure you're more than welcome to participate. I was just gonna say, our briefings are prescribed to 10 minutes, so if you could try to share that time amongst yourselves, that'd be great.
10 to 3?
Yeah. Not 10 for each of you, 10 for all of you.
Okay. So actually, your worship, members of council, members of the public, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes to talk about this. We'll start with Hersh. So Hersh, do you want to go?
Great. Thank you. I think it was in year 2006 when I was here, twice. First in the beginning of the year, when, at that time, Rosen had set up the Poverty Task Force. A task force on poverty reduction, not poverty task force. So, and then, within six months, we had come out with a sort of a blueprint on how we're going to proceed with that. And as a member of that five-member task force, it is sort of my pleasure to see that this work continues. Five years, six years back in 2006, when we did that work, we did go out and about and talk to many people, heard a lot of, I think we had lots of town hall meeting types, and came out of that, the real need for us to have a sustainable Kingston that we all want, we had to address the issues of poverty. And out of that came a Community Roundtable on Poverty, which was generously funded by the city, and I was really glad to see that happen. And there was a nice partnership that came through with the Community Foundation, and the city, and United Way, and all of us. And I think, and through the years, we figured that there was a new change that was needed, and again, there was another process. And I'm really glad to see that that work is continuing. And in the hands of the leadership of Bhavana from United Way, and Lani from City here, the group, this work has become much more measurable. And I really, I think that's, that's the best way for me to, it has a sense of a business plan, the structure that is needed, because it's such a large motherhood statement to try to reduce poverty. It seems like it's beyond our control, but I think what they have been able to do through the consultation, has identified five areas that they want to focus on, they're not they, I'm part of it. And I'm very much part of the health table on that. Health, housing, skills, unemployment, community supports for education, and of course, the social services programs. Those five areas, they're key areas that, there are about 80 volunteers, there's still very strong voice of community in it. And I'm pleased to see where we are today. We had a fantastic forum a couple of weeks back, and this energy to come up with some innovative ideas, to start making some real changes. I'm gonna stop here and have Bhavana speak to each of the five areas where some changes are being made. Thanks.
Thanks, Hersh. And I would like to acknowledge, there are members in, in the audience who have been involved in the Poverty Reduction Initiative. It has been a wonderful journey. There is a report that's out. We've actually run, out of the first run of copies, we're getting some new, fresh ones printed tomorrow. They are available on the website that Sheldon will tell you about, and they are available at the United Way office after tomorrow. So, just a quick overview, we've talked about this, these are the five areas. It's hard to read, but those of you who have the plan, I'm speaking really fast, so I'll slow down a bit. We've got 15 recommendations, and this was interesting, because we had to bring it down from this big ideas concept, and bring it, narrow it down to something that we could actually do. So some of the thoughts that you will see, some of the plans that have been developed are large in scope, and some are very small and immediate, and will produce some results right away. So it's a combination of long-term and short-term thinking. But what has been wonderful is how the committees have worked together. We haven't always agreed at the committee table. There have been differences of opinion, which is only natural with an issue like this, such a complex issue. But what has been wonderful is to see how we've worked our way through it. We've been able to express ourselves in an area of comfort, and what we've also done is work with community groups that are already working on the issue, so we're not duplicating efforts. So each group actually has representatives from agencies, from the public sector, from organizations. They also have members who have actually lived in poverty, or are currently living in poverty. And that is the most important voice, and one of the most humbling voices that we have heard around the table. So the co-chairs for the Community Supports to Education, and this is not to replace the education system, this is to provide support in the community outside. What can we do as a community to help kids succeed in the, through the education system? So again, they're up there, you can see them. These are three highlights, three points that we've taken, building on successful models, engaging parents and caregivers, and making sure that all children have a chance in schools. And again, these are not in the schools, this is outside, helping kids succeed in school. Health, as Hersh mentioned, Community Health Centers is actually facilitating this group, and we have Delina and Dr. Kieran Moore facilitating that. Again, it's looking at everything through a health lens, and we all know that there is a direct connection between health and poverty, and this is something we want to keep in mind as we proceed through everything we do. And one of the important voices around here is making sure that people who are vulnerable, who are low-income, who are living in poverty, especially children, are given a chance to have strong, healthy, productive lives. Housing, again, this is not to replace the work that you as a city are doing with housing and homelessness, or what other groups are doing. This is to add on. So again, Linda's in the crowd, or she was in the crowd. There she is, behind Gerard. Linda has been working on this for a long time, and again, it's all about engaging landlords, tenants, the community, to ensure that we recognize that affordable housing, not just supported housing, but affordable housing is available, that we build on community net, neighborhood networks that we already have in existence, and build them further. And again, facilitate access to essential services, so that we can keep people housed once they find a safe, stable, accessible, and affordable home. We are actually, as United Way, we are a pilot project looking at youth homelessness. And this was slightly disturbing when we looked at the statistics, because out of the hundreds of individuals who are in the shelter system, 26.5% of them are youth between the ages of 16 and 24. So we are looking at a different approach, and the city and a number of partners are working with us on the steering committee to find local ways on how we can do differently, recognizing that government is a player, but that we as a community also owe it to the young people in our community to do better for them, or for them to do better with us. The skills development and employment, again, this crosses a lot of areas. We have three co-chairs who have worked really hard, and this has been one, a really interesting discussion, very productive. Again, it's access to living wage jobs, and I know council is looking at living wage down the road. There is a living wage group, so we're not duplicating their efforts, we're just supporting it. But what we're looking at is looking at different things. What are the barriers to people accessing and staying employed, and what can we do as a community to help them? And there's some simple solutions. We'll come back with more detail as it develops. The social services and community supports, and anyone who's been through social services knows how, how stressful it is, and how de-energizing it is to, to work in the system to try to get the supports you need. So anything we can do as a community to build a compassionate system of support and care for people who are at a very stressful point in their lives is going to be something we'll look at, and how can we provide access? So these are the five groups. I've given you a really quick version. It doesn't capture the, the amount of conversations and discussions and energy that's gone into this. That's captured some of it in your report, but we would welcome any comments or feedback that you'd like to provide, because this is just the starting, the start of a very important journey. I'm gonna hand it over to Sheldon, who will wrap this up.
Okay, I know I have probably about one minute left, so we'll just... So even though we, first of all, Commissioner Hurdle, as you'll see from the report in front of you, was, is the co-chair of this endeavor, and I'm filling in for her tonight. Even though there was five distinct themes, there were a number of common theme focuses throughout the, what we found as we went through this. One of the key ones that went throughout all the five was mental health issues, that each of them are trying to tackle, food security, and trying to, the ability to actually access service and tap into networks was seen as a problem throughout all of the areas. The other thing, the precariousness of trying to find enough food and have an appropriate level of food was a theme as well. We are making some inroads already with the Food Charter, the Food Policy Council, and the Food Providers Network, but the United Way did go out of its way to try to do a point-in-time count, as in May, to try to find out the depth of this issue. And they found that there was close to 1,000 meals being provided each day in the community, 260 hampers being provided to families, and over 1,900 meals in schools provided that day. So just quickly, what does poverty look like in Kingston? There's a lot of information in the report about this, but about 1 in 7 people in Kingston live below the poverty line currently. And even if you make minimum wage, you still would be below the LICO, the income cutoff threshold. And even persons that are, that are accessing the food bank are quite often employed. So poverty is costing us all fairly significantly in the community, through emergency services, less productivity, healthcare, et cetera. So next steps. We did, as Hersh mentioned, had a very successful community forum held on June 3 at Portsmouth Olympic Harbor, that was very well attended. There was a number of additional volunteers gained through that signup, which is encouraging. The working groups will continue to, to, to meet and start implementing now, not just developing the plan, but try to implement their action plans. And we'll be reporting back in 2014 on that progress. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Counselor Downs?
Just, it might be a bit of a political question, but maybe, how do you, how do you get across the idea that poverty kind of goes across political jurisdiction, municipal, provincial, and federal? Because sometimes, when issues come to council, we, we say, you know, because I'm included in this group, we say, "It's a provincial issue. We haven't got the money to do it." And I'm, you know, for me personally, was the Kingston Dental Coalition, who was looking for some money to get people's teeth fixed, to get them into the workforce, to get them off welfare. And the principal argument that was used was, "It's a provincial jurisdiction." So sincerely, trying to de-politicize it, what, what can we do to kind of break down those political jurisdictions, so that we can get our citizens, you know, they're Kingstonians, Ontarioans, and Canadians, they're the same people, how do we get them to, what do we do to help them? It's one person, like, there's one taxpayer, right? But it's one person. How do we help them?
We will let politicians work that through. We hope you recognize how important this issue, that there are children living in poverty, that's not acceptable. There are 4.4 million Canadians living in poverty. 1 in 7 of us in Kingston live in poverty. We hope you as politicians will find a way to work through this, because there are kids and youth, and seniors, and individuals and families counting on your finding a way through this.
So are, my second question, are you?
Can I just add to that? Yes, absolutely. There are, there are political jurisdictions, I understand that, but, but I think each one of us, regardless whether we are municipal, provincial, or federal, you know, elected... whether we are municipal, provincial, or federal, you know, elected official, what roles we play, but I think each one of us has to take a very deep look at it. It's what is it that we can do? And I think that's the question you're asking. I mean, we can keep on passing the buck to somebody, and, you know, somebody else is going to do it, but it has to start right here. And I think this council has surprised me many times, somebody who came from Toronto, and I looked at it, you guys have done some very innovative stuff. You were the first group that really put the money back in the hands of people when we did the Keep program, Kingston Entitlement Access Program, and that was a fantastic thing. You were the first one that changed some of the dental monies as well, and that led to the Dental Coalition and eventually the Healthy Smiles program. So I think, we can get caught up in that, but I think if we can take some small innovative steps, that might change to a process. Healthy Smiles program would not have happened, KCHC would not have had a dental program with a dentist on a salary if we hadn't had those things. So I think there are some small steps that we have to take, we have to challenge each other, and I hope that we continue to do that. I think that whole area of who's responsible is not going to take us anywhere.
So if it's not entirely the municipality's responsibility, I'm hearing then that with a partnership with the United Way and with, you know, other organizations, that there possibly is a way for the municipality to participate in perhaps a partnership? Is that a fair question asked?
Absolutely. The City of Kingston actually has been quite a leader in recognizing this as an issue. We are looking at ways we as a community can do things differently. So everything in this plan is about what can we do as a community. It's not counting on us being able to break some of those other barriers. So absolutely, the city is a partner, and we hope you'll continue to be a strong partner in this.
Counselor Neal?
Thank you. First of all, I was at the community forum, and I thought it was a great, great opportunity to network with all kinds of people in the community, and I really appreciated that. I guess, I haven't seen or heard, other than legitimately, the comment that people working full-time on a minimum wage fall below the poverty level. I know that there are community activists and some labor groups that are working hard to convince the provincial government to increase the minimum wage. There are also many communities working towards creating a living wage for those people who work as contractors or for municipalities and school boards. Would you, would you like to comment? Would you, do you support those initiatives, either through the United Way or through, and do we have an opportunity to address the wage side of this equation? Because I think that's the one thing that's sometimes missing.
Certainly, the living wage, the United Way does support a living wage. We recognize that there are some businesses that will never be able to afford a living wage, we recognize that, but what we're hoping is that those businesses who can, those organizations who can, will continue to do so. Poverty is an issue that impacts all of us, and we know that the more income a family can make, the better their children will eat. So anything we can do to support that, it's not the only solution, some of it is bigger than we can do. What we've tried to deal with in this report is what can we actually do? Where can we actually have an impact? And so we're kind of picking our battles the first round.
Thank you. Because one of the things that became evident, I was in the breakout group for food security, was that a lot of the difficulty that a lot of families face, they're making money, working full-time, working sometimes two jobs, but the difficulty is 70% of their income goes towards lodgings, and therefore, they're forced almost on a daily basis to access the food, food services for themselves and their family, even though they're making, they're working full-time, sometimes full-time and part-time.
Okay, so we're asking questions of the delegation, we're not engaging in discussion with them?
That's right. I was just about to ask the question.
Well, okay. I hope it relates to the preamble.
Yeah, it does. I'd appreciate if you could comment on how we're working towards a coordinated approach within the, because we have many disparate organizations that assist in trying to maintain food security.
We're actually working on that, because as Sheldon mentioned, it is an issue that's come across all working groups. So the meeting that you were at was the start. We have started to analyze what's happening out there, how can we make it more efficient? We're looking at a client focus, so where are people most likely to access food? What are the barriers to them accessing food, and how can we make it easier? The Food Providers Network has actually been around for a while, and they've been working really hard. So any support we can give them to facilitate that process is being done right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I noticed with interest on page 22, you probably noted this, and perhaps it makes it pertinent to that many more people, is the fall in middle incomes. There's a slight increase, appears to me, or a drop in those, a very small drop in those who are in the low-income group, but in the significant drop in the next two categories from 30, $25,000 to $50,000. And it seems to be primarily related to the categories above, like the people earning more than $50,000 are dropping off. Do you have any comment about how that's affecting the city in general, and how it impacts on economic development?
We do need to analyze that a little bit more. This is based on the latest statistics we got from StatsCan, so we will need to go back and see some of the causes. We could speculate, but I'd rather come back with some more information, and maybe through city staff and maybe the CAO, we can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I recently, I think that the two of you were there, I hope I'm not putting you on spot too, but the screening of the documentary, A Place at the Table, that was at, that was at the screening room a few weeks ago. And one of the things that I found very interesting from that, and I'm curious how your comment on how it relates to Canada and Kingston particularly, is with respect to food security, and Sheldon raised, mentioned that towards the end, and in that documentary, it talked, one of the things that I found most eye-opening about it was that the same state, and I don't want to say it because it'll probably be the wrong one, but the same state that has the highest amount, the, that has the highest proportion of individuals who are obese, also has the highest proportion of individuals who do not have access to food, and it all comes down to the fact of...
Point of order?
Yes.
I can't resist. Do you have a question?
Yep. I do, I do. And I, from the outset, I said, "I'm curious how this, your comments on how this relates to Canada," because at the end of that, I came across thinking, "Wow, there's a, that is a huge eye-opener." But I wonder if that's the case in Canada and in Kingston, because it was an American documentary.
So I certainly don't have stats to say that, but we know scientifically that people who have poor access to food are often obese, and you wonder why. And they're obese because they don't have access to high-quality food, that's one thing. They're probably ending up eating a lot of starchy and oily foods, and they're probably not having access to any kind of gym or whatever, they don't have $500 bike. So there are those issues. And also scientifically, we know that if a woman, when she's pregnant, and if she's not eating well, will you be surprised that she's going to have a heavier baby? And because we are so naturally, our bodies, we are survivors, we're trained, you know, our bodies are made to survive with anything, the fetus learns to conserve and create more fat cells. So we are giving birth to babies that are going to become fat, obese adults. So I think this is a very big problem, and we all know that. It's, obesity in Canada is probably as prevalent, if not more in certain parts than in states. So the whole issue of access to high-quality food is really key, access to good services like mental health and all, because then you know how to deal with coping strategies are very key. So in response to your question, we don't have stats for Kingston, but we know that it's true, that people who are low-income will probably be obese for wrong reasons.
Okay.
But I just, I'm just tempted to say that, I think this is not an issue that's going to go away very quickly. I think we need to stay on it, and this is just an interim report, and I hope that the support of the council will continue. And that 14% needs to go down, way down, and it might be one child at a time, or one person at a time, but it also could be some policies that we can change within, within the jurisdiction of the municipalities around social services, how we can turn back through your AMOs and, you know, there are ways to go about it. So I just would stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Your Worship, for promoting this a couple of weeks ago, and thank you to the councillors who've been coming out to the meetings.
Are there any petitions to present? I have one. All right, it reads, oh, it reads, "We, the undersigned students of Trudell PS," I think that means public school, "want to make our voice heard. It is our opinion that Mr. Nice Cream should be permitted to play music while driving his ice cream truck." This is a legitimate petition that my office received, okay? No laughing. It is our, it is our belief that this music is vital to his business and to our ability to be aware he is in our neighborhood. And it is signed by 132 people, and then there are an additional 25 handwritten letters of support. So I'm not sure how you're going to fit this into the minutes, Mr. Clerk, but it's all And are there any other petitions? That awkward moment when you forget your password. Motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolence, and speedy recovery. Moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Patterson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Hamdi Ulaqueya, founder and CEO of Chobani Yogurt, on receiving the World Entrepreneur of the Year Award. Mr. Ulaqueya was selected for his honor by a panel who reviewed his work against 46 other national entrepreneur winners. Moved by Mayor Garretson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Patterson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Philip Jessup, Partech inventor and Canada Research Chair in Green Chemistry at Queen's University, on receiving the, any award in new fontiers of hydrocarbons. This award recognizes Dr. Jessup's research efforts to advance environmental sustainability. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Mayor Garretson, that congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to the Kingston Frontenac Public Library, Syden Branch, and Schultz and Zabak Architects Limited on receiving the 2013 Ontario Library Association New Library Building Award. This award recognizes excellence in architectural design and planning of libraries across Ontario. There's one condolence in the added, moved by Counselor Glover, seconded by Counselor Patterson, that Kingston City Council extends its sincere sympathies to the family of Professor Donald Mackenzie Sherman, who died on Sunday, the 16th of June. He was born on September 2, 1924, in Cape Breton. From high school, he joined the Royal Canadian Air Force and served as a wireless officer in bomber aircraft. By the second, by the end of the Second World War, he had flown 18 missions over Europe. He then went to university and on completion of his doctorate at Cambridge University in 1955, joined the History Department at the Royal Military College of Canada. He left RMC in 1965 to join the History Department at Queen's University. In 1981, he returned to RMC as the head of the History Department. His publications ranging from the naval history and the education of a navy to local history and Bishop and His People, John Travers Lewis and the Anglican Diocese of Ontario, 1862 to 1902, were all characterized by solid research and became standards in their respective fields. He will be missed by his family, friends, and former students from coast to coast. I'll call to question on those. That carries. We do not have any deferred motions. Report 85 from the Committee of the, of closed meeting of council.
Moved by Counselor Berg, seconded by Counselor George, that report number 85 from the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting be received and adopted.
There's one clause in here with respect to bylaw to stop up enclosed, declare surplus, and that's for 267 Weller Avenue. Okay, I'll call to question on it. I'm going to have to wait a sec. Are we all done? Can we display the results? No, but Counselor Downs has removed himself? Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you. It carries. Report 86 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor O'Sannick, seconded by Counselor Patterson, that report number 86 from the Chief Minister of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
Would anybody like to separate any? Counselor Neal? Yes, Counselor Scott?
Item J, please.
So we'll separate F-I-J-K. So we'll deal with the balance first. The first is delegated authority for community lease agreements for sports partner groups. The second is award of contract for crisis incident management system. C is approval of expropriation in the, the Great Calaracway River area. D is request for noise exemption, Queen's University Orientation Week. E, City of Kingston Arts Fund grant recommendations. We're going to skip F. G, application for assignment of serving sidewalk patio at 331 King Street East, Tango Nouveau. H, review of council remuneration. I, we're going to skip I, we're going to skip J, we're going to skip K. And L, another application for serving sidewalk patio, Six Dudes Inc., slash Red House, located at 369 King Street East. So we'll vote on those first. I'll just make, I'll just bring to everybody's attention that G was changed, and that was with respect to the serving sidewalk patio, and that's in the added. So we'll vote on the balance now, please. Carrie, we'll now go back to F, direct award for consulting services for the update of Kingston Transportation Master Plan and the city's transportation model. Counselor Neal?
Just very briefly, could staff explain, because I know normally, in amounts over $50,000... Because I know normally, in amounts over $50,000, we do issue an RFP, and I'm just curious. I know this company has done reputable work for us in the past, and they were involved in the original plan, but I always have a little bit of concern if we're doing single sourcing. If somebody could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mayor Garretson, to the member of council. Certainly, staff are very respectful of the purchasing policy, and certainly wanting to preserve the integrity of that particular policy. As it relates to this particular sole source, there were a few reasons why we consider this to be unique or extenuating circumstances, one of which is the fact that the particular software model that we use for the transportation model, called TransCAD, is not necessarily a widely-used modelling package for transportation analysis. And certainly, the work that AECOM has done for us in the past, we have found to be quite good, and I think we're also looking to make sure that there's some consistency in the work that happens through this particular model update. The other thing that is described in the report is some concern as it relates to time sensitivity and making sure that this work is concluded in a period of time that would allow those results to flow through to the next update to the development charges by law, which is scheduled to be concluded by September of next year. And certainly last, and I think I've already mentioned that, but we believe AECOM and the proposal that they have offered us is complete. Certainly, in our judgement, we think it represents a reasonable amount of work for the price that they have offered, and certainly, they have lots of experience and history in doing this type of work for the city of Kingston.
I appreciate that, and I will be supporting the motion, although I would really appreciate, for all of those reasons, I'm sure if an RFP had been issued, and the criteria of what we truly needed was part of that RFP, we probably would be asked to approve the same vendor, because I know they've done good work for us in the past. But I guess I'm just concerned that this doesn't set a precedent in future. So RFPs are always preferable, in my opinion, but thank you very much.
Councillor Glover?
Thank you very much, Mayor Garretson. Following on exactly from councillor Neil, understanding the reasons for going sole source this time, noting what councillor Neil said about how an RFP could be written, will staff commit that the next time this sort of work needs to be done, it will be through the RFP process?
Mr. Van Buren?
Again, through you, Mayor Garretson. The quick response to that is yes. We've offered some detail in the report in front of council this evening that certainly looks forward to the next regularly-scheduled update to the transportation master plan, and certainly looking to return to a competitive process as far as doing this work. And we've also mentioned that part and parcel of looking forward at the next update five years from now may also be a revisit on the actual modelling software that we utilise to do this work.
Carries. Item I is amending legal, amending agreement with Loyalist Township for recycling services.
Thank you. And I've got just a straightforward question, the same question I asked regarding CAC when we, all through the 90s, when we were in a service delivery contract with other municipalities. Can we be assured this has full cost recovery, including operating capital and all administrative fees? So full cost recovery or better?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, we provide the work for Loyalist Township at full cost recovery, plus we have an administrative overhead that we charge on top of that.
Thank you. That was the preferred answer.
I'll call the question on that, please. Carries. Item J, miscellaneous speed limit reductions. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I've got a question here about the speed limit reduction on Perth Road, and staff have indicated that there should be a reduction on the speed limit because of the new traffic light that is going in at McAdoo's Lane, but the zone is to extend north of the CRCA's entrance to the little Cataract Way Creek Conservation Area. But I'm aware, being on the board of the CRCA, that they have quite the concerns there about the traffic safety of the intersection for their driveway into the conservation area, and I'm wondering if staff have looked at that intersection and have calculated the speed reduction to accommodate and make that intersection safer.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mayor Garretson, to the member of council. Yes, that's correct. The recommendation here is to include a zone up to 100 metres north of the entrance into the Conservation Authority, in an attempt to address some of the concerns with usage of that particular intersection.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, councillor Exton?
Thank you, Your Worship. On the issue in particular, I'm not concerned about the fact that we're putting in 40 km an hour zone at 7th Avenue. My concern is, why don't we put them in as a matter of policy for all primary schools? It seems to me that we'd be educating the public, it would be easier to educate them because they'd know all primary schools have 40 km an hour, and it's an additional precaution. I just, I don't understand why we just don't do it as a matter of policy. That's my question.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, Mayor Garretson. I think certainly as the report tries to indicate, there may be certain features of the roads adjacent to some of these schools that may not necessarily lend themselves well to having a lowered speed limit. It may be proximity to adjacent stop signs, they may be exceedingly short block lengths or dead-end streets, and certainly, one of the concerns with staff is that I think we want to make sure that when we have new posted speed limits, those speed limits are going to be respected. And if we overpopulate with low speed limits, or if we put speed limits in that may be overly aggressive, there is a concern, and certainly that's part of our discussions, ongoing discussions with Kingston Police, is about the ability to enforce.
And you don't think that would be outweighed by generally telling the public, the general public, most of whom probably adhere, I would suggest, the speed limits within the proximity of primary schools, that when you're near a school, slow down? And if it's posted such, I see the stop signs, but the issue is not whether people's, well, it could be that they stop or don't, we know that, but that what speed they're going to get up to after they've left a stop sign? Or the dead-end street, I'm not quite sure I understand that one, since they're going to come to a stop eventually, going at least one direction. Have you weighed it out that, you know, that there might be an overall city-wide educational benefit?
So this particular item on the agenda this evening is with respect to this one, or these three particular areas, and although you might have a very good discussion to be had, I don't think that it's fair to be asking Mr. Van Buren of policy decisions at this point, especially since it's up to council to make policy decisions. So if you feel as though a review of this should occur, then I would encourage you to bring forward a motion to council asking staff to review this with the suggestion that all school zones be lowered. But putting Mr. Van Buren on the spot right now, asking about the entire school, I don't think is particularly fair, and it also is not in keeping with the three in particular areas, 7th Avenue, Perth Road, and Battersea Road, which are listed on the agenda. So...
That's fine, but I didn't know that would be the ruling, that it couldn't be amended here. So that's fine.
Well, you can amend, you could amend to add a specific area, like one, another row, well...
I get your point. I see your point.
Yeah, I think it's better as a notice of motion. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I believe that if, and my colleagues on EITP can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we passed a motion, didn't we, recommending that school zones have a lowered...
Yeah, okay, so it's out of, your point is out of order, because right now, the item on the agenda is with respect to changes that are being made on three particular roads, not an overarching policy of the city of Kingston. So great discussions we had, but unfortunately, we're out of order right now, and we need to really get back on track. So does anybody else have anything with respect to the three streets and those intersections that are listed here? Okay, so I'll call the question on these. That carries. Award of contract print advertising for the city of Kingston. Councillor Neil?
Just one quick comment. I know that it's been Kingston this week and the WIG standard for as long as my memory goes back, but I'm curious, has EMC been invited to tender for this? And if, I guess, have they been invited to tender on this contract?
Through you, Mayor Garretson. Yes, the answer is they have been invited to tender, and in fact, we have used EMC in the past. They have been a part of our contract.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have some questions and a comment with respect to this, and perhaps it's better just to turn the floor, turn the chair to the deputy mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have the chair, and I recognise you.
So I had a few questions. The report talks about spending up to $250,000 with the WIG standard, or for print media, generally speaking. How much of the 250 was spent last year, in 2012? And do you anticipate it to be the same this year? Through you, Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The amount quoted in our report indicates what we did spend in 2012, and it is our aim to reduce that spending in 2013.
And a follow-up question to that is, how would that be reduced? With the WIG standard in particular, we have one ad, which is a full-page ad once a week, that costs us roughly $3,000 a week. How would you reduce that? Do you do it only once every two weeks?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. You will see in the WIG on a typical Tuesday that we actually have usually more than one page. If you look at it today, for instance, it's two pages. So we see that as opportunity. Going forward, we are looking at how we package our material on that page, and look at opportunities to link more to our website, really analyse those areas where we're legislated and therefore mandated to put it in print versus those areas where we have opportunity to use other forums to get our information out, including the social media.
And through you, Deputy Mayor, I'm curious about us being legislated to use print media. Is that legislated, maybe the clerk is the best person to answer this, I don't know, is that legislated by the province, the federal government, or is that just a bylaw of the city of Kingston?
Who would like to answer that? Miss Nicholson?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Provincial legislation, under the Planning Act and the Municipal Act, I believe.
In print?
In print.
Okay. And in terms of these ads and their effectiveness, so that full one-page ad that we pay $3,000 a week for, are we able to measure how effective that is? Like, how many people it's getting out to public meetings, or anything like that?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We do have demographic information, for instance, from the WIG, in terms of readership numbers for Kingston this week and the Kingston WIG standard. Of course, the fact that the paper is distributed doesn't necessarily mean that everyone is reading it, but that would certainly be baseline information for us. I think what we realise in this day and age is that you need to use a multiple venue format, really, so that you're spreading your information across a variety of tools.
And so my last question, Deputy Mayor, falls on this idea of multiple forms of communication. How much do we spend on social media?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Social media, our expenses, I couldn't give you an exact number, but essentially, we do have our Facebook and Twitter accounts, YouTube accounts. There's some cost in terms of equipment, for instance, that you need to put a video on, that we have some monitoring services that we use as well. I would have to look at what our number actually is.
I appreciate that information, Deputy Mayor. I am not going to be supporting this. I think that a quarter of a million dollars to be spent on the WIG standard to put a one-page ad in their paper once a week is a waste of taxpayer dollars. In a day and age when media and information is as widely available as it is today, I think it's an absolute waste of money. Yes, we might be legislated to put some stuff in print, such as planning notices or whatever they might be, but I do not believe that spending this kind of money is in the best interest of the taxpayer. I appreciate the comment that we have computers and people typing the information for social media, but that's the extent, based on what I just heard, that we're spending on social media. The clerk's office types the notices that go in the WIG standard and types the information that goes in that information. And quite frankly, I don't think that this is a good use of money. There are other ways that we can be communicating, and at the very least, I would encourage council to reduce this contract from two years to one year, so that we can come up with a better plan a year from now with respect to how to spend taxpayer dollars on getting information out there. Because people around this table know, Deputy Mayor, that information, I'm so sorry to say, but by the time the WIG standard printed anything about Mr. Nice Cream, everybody in the city already knew about it. And this is not an attack on the WIG standard. They have an online paper, an online forum, that I would much rather see us be putting money into. So we can keep the investment with the WIG standard, but just put it to the other medium. And I realise that there's some limited, based on the report, some limited information that's going in there, but I think that's where we need to be focusing our money. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
If that was an amendment, I would second it.
Thank you, I return the chair.
I have the chair now, so if anybody else would like to move a motion, you have the opportunity to do that, but you've already spoken to this one. So you can't. Councillor Downs?
I'll be supporting the motion, and the reason I am is that in Kingston, especially this city, we have many senior citizens, as you know, Your Worship, and many senior citizens rely on print meeting, print media, to get the information that they need, especially from the city. So I think that, you know, the print media is clearly in transition. You know, we have social media now, we certainly have computers. You know, I always think of my 85-year-old mother who lives in Belleville, and she relies on the paper to get her information. She doesn't tweet, she doesn't know how to use a computer, and I think just from the perspective of our senior citizens, that we should be providing for a transition as we move, as we move from print media into the electronic media. So I think that we have... So I think that we have a special task force, as you know, your worship, on senior citizens. How do we, how do we make a more user-friendly city for senior citizens? Well, clearly, this is one of the ways that we do, is that senior citizens who don't know how to use a computer, who don't have social media, senior citizens rely on the print media, and I think it's very important that senior citizens be given this opportunity to continue to be informed about their, about the city.
Counselor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. Through you to the staff. I'm just wondering if the public notices that are available through the online version of the WIG are included, incorporated in this contract that's being proposed right in front of us?
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The answer is yes.
Thank you. And secondly, how complex would it be to reevaluate the time length on this contract, which is before us tonight, at two years? The mayor suggested looking at it again for, say, one year, and I would suggest that the possibility being that during the next year, we could explore other avenues of print media. Would it be possible to, to explore other ways of circulating this information that would still honor our requirements with respect to provincial legislation for the Planning Act?
Through you, Mayor Garrettson. We are certainly, I think, very interested in looking at those opportunities going forward. I think we acknowledge that we do have to include our information, as I mentioned previously, in a number of different areas to make sure we do cover the wide range of citizens that we have in our community, and we will be actively exploring those opportunities going forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Scott, and then Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. First question here I've got is, the Planning Act notices in the paper, are they a courtesy notice? Are we required to put it in the newspaper?
Ms. Nicholson? Mr. Lynn Scott?
Thank you. The answer depends on the nature of the notice. So for site-specific Planning Act applications, it's a courtesy notice in the paper, because we're able to give a notice required through a combination of letters to all residents within the specified geographic area of the site and by posting of a sign. However, for large area or citywide amendments to the official plan or zoning bylaw, we have to publish it in a newspaper.
Okay, because we here in Planning Committee, courtesy, was put in the newspaper as a courtesy. Now, since these are applications for zoning, et cetera, and there are fees, are there fees that applicants pay for this advertising that is done in the newspapers?
Yes, my understanding is that for notices under the Planning Act, that we recover the cost of that ad.
Okay, so we are getting some cost recovery there. My experience in the rural area, once the WIG standard changed its printing plant, the newspaper was to be delivered first thing in the morning, and they could no longer actually accommodate that for much of the rural area. As a result, I gave up my print copy and went to the online version of the WIG standard. And I must say that once I go through the WIG standard online, and I see the city of Kingston's notices, they are so small that I can't even read them, so I actually have to zero in on reading them, and I'm thinking, if I'm going in to read something that's actually online, I might as well just go to something looking for the notices online. So I agree with the mayor that technology has changed, and that we should actually be looking at something here. I don't have any recommendations on this, but I am aware that things are definitely changing, and for rural residents especially, that this is probably, there are probably easier and better ways of getting this information. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. Since I have been a counselor, one of the major items I hear from people regularly is how do I find out about things? Because we don't have a really, really good system in place, especially one that's free. We have two, one that's been brought up, two items. One is the generational, yes, we do have a change that's happening, and we do tend to have a line of people who are comfortable on computer and a line of people who are not. And we haven't actually investigated that statistically to find out how many people we would reach if we went completely online. The other one has to do with what we were talking about tonight and hearing about was people who don't have money. And there is a large group in Kingston who simply don't have access to computers and internet and smartphones. They just can't afford them, and they don't have them, and that certainly came up in the many discussions I've had as part of the poverty groups. I think I can see a change could happen over the years if we do it properly, with proper analysis and, and how we're going to do it that makes sense. I could imagine, say, the 211 number. That's free, you pick up your phone, dial 211, and that you can push something that says, this is what's happening at council this week. We're nowhere near that yet, and I don't think we should be planning a major change like this and panning the newspapers when we have one free one that goes with what I've just mentioned about 211. Certainly, a change is going to come, but let's not do it radically, because we do have two, certainly two groups of people for whom this change would make a major, have a major effect on their ability to know what's going on and what their city's doing. Thank you. I will be supporting this award of contract. Thank you.
Counselor Glover?
Thank you, Mayor Garrettson. Just a couple of thoughts come to mind as I've been listening to the discussion. Anick Beldl, who I've been sitting here, I can think of at least five constituents who, one time or another, told me they don't use a computer. At least two of them are retired from Queens, so non-computer use can cover a wide spectrum from those who can't afford it to those who don't wish to, going back to Counsel Shell's observation that there is a stream of people that just aren't comfortable using computers. I'm also aware of a number of people that read the newspaper when they're in McDonald's, so they might not be on a subscription list. I don't know how circulation will count those people, but that very definitely is a free way how the information can be caught out. Third, on a technical point, we're sometimes cautioned against making an amendment on the fly. And earlier this evening, with respect to AECON traffic counts, Dr. Van Buren said that there's a little bit of a time squeeze, and they want to get this through because of 12 or 18 months out. 12 or 18 months out could put us into a squeeze with the possibility of becoming lame duck, and an amendment on the fly that might reduce the term of this contract that staff are recommending could very easily put us in a situation where we were not able to act, because we're a lame duck. And without time to think that through, I think it's prudent to accept staff advice this time, flag it by all means, that we want it considered downstream, but perhaps we're getting into a time bind as well.
Counselor Hudson?
This, the answer to my question might have been approached, I don't think it was With print media, we have the means to be able to measure how many people, or at least how many entry points, how many households we get the, get the news into. Do we have that, and for television, they do the same thing. Do we have that for social media?
Through you, Mayor Garrettson. We do have numbers on our Twitter account. For instance, we know the number of Twitter followers are 7,000-plus and at this point in time, and we know that we are 600-plus, for instance, on our Facebook page. I would caution, our Facebook page is about seven, six or seven months old, so we're still growing that. We grew it by 100 last month, for instance, but we are, so those numbers are current.
What are the comparable figures for print and television? I don't think we do a lot on television, but for television.
Through you, Mayor Garrettson. The combined readership of the WIG and KTW is approximately 143,000 during a six-day period, according to the WIG's information.
Okay, I think those numbers sort of settle it. I'd also like to just point out, as a matter of social discourse, that television news is parasitical on print news, okay? That's where they go get their stories, okay? Largely, not entirely, but largely, okay? And that's fine.
There's not going to be a good story about you on the TV tomorrow night, Counselor Hudson.
This is well-known in the media field. It's not news, though they don't like, people don't like to talk about it, perhaps. And then social media is, commentary on news was found in other sources. Sure, there's Iran, there's Libya, wherever the news sources are capable of getting there, but, you know, by and large, they're not, you know, making news, you know? So I think, I think, why do people go, I'm not, yeah. I don't mind being in this, I don't think I'm in a hole, and I'm not mind in being there. I just think we have a dose of reality to this. So I think, you know, social media is fine, but people are going to these things, they get actual information about actual events. Where are they going to look? They're going to go, I think the numbers say they're going, they were more likely to get it through the newspaper, and we could do more television, I've already said, always said that numerous times. So TV wasn't there for that, perhaps. So I think, you know, the point of how it relates to this is, you know, are there, is it cheaper, but does it actually reach people? And I think we need this kind of contract to reach people. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'll apologize on behalf of council, Bill. We all love you and Julie. And, yeah, no, I think this is a fair proposal. We're talking about much more than just simply a one-page, once a week or twice a week in the Kingston WIG standard. I mean, it's quite clear there's a number of things for this value, you know, what we're looking to pay, and it's up to that amount what they are going to offer for us. And I think people out there need to realize, you know, it's the distribution of the spring and summer and the fall and winter recreational, these are guide magazines, the list goes on and on and on. So we're forgetting the whole package that's here before us. And I'm one that doesn't tweet, I don't Facebook, I mentioned that at a meeting last night, I'm still into smoke signals. I learned about the hiring of our police chief, our fire chief, and I learned about Mr. Nice Cream, all thanks to the WIG standard and CKWS. I don't know if it was tweeted out to members of council, but I didn't receive an email or a phone call or a letter or somebody knocking at my door or anything. So I depended on the media to tell me as a counselor what I probably should have known long before they did, but I didn't. So I, you know, there's a good reason to have the accessibility to the print media and the television, and I think it's needed in our municipality. There's a lot of people out there that quite simply don't tweet for whatever reason and don't access Facebook, and therefore, they don't get their information unless it's provided through the print media in most cases. So I think that we, you know, we have to be sure that we're covering all of our residents, you know, and their ability to access the information that we want to share as members of council and city operations on a weekly basis. So I think it's a good proposal, and I'm certainly going to support it.
It's fair to say that there are not positive comments on the Twitter universe and Facebook about city council right now. Mr. Lynn Scott, did you have something to add?
Thank you, your worship, and it's not that staff wishes to have the last word, but I would note that if, if we are directed to only issue a one-year contract, that the RFP was issued on the basis of two years, and that the WIG standard would, might wish to revisit some of the terms and prices that they gave us based on, based on the two-year RFP term.
The one, the one thing I think we can all be rest assured is, this story will not be in the newspaper tomorrow, and hence, won't be on TV, so. I'll call to question on this. Report 87 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Neal. The report number is 87, from the Chief of the Minister of Officer Recommended Be Received and Adopted.
There's one clause, and that's with respect to approval of application 2013-02BD for financial assistance under Community Improvement Plan.
Point of order?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions that may affect my vote on this, so I would prefer if, if there was another seconder.
Oh, will somebody else second the report? Counselor Downs? You have questions, Counselor Neal?
I do. It's interesting how much you learn in this job. I would just like some clarification, because some constituents have had some concerns. As I understand it, through, through you to Planning, site preparation is allowable to what extent? Footings, foundation, digging the hole up to when construction begins? Could, could that be clarified for me?
Yes, Ms. Vane?
Thank you, your worship. The property owner would be permitted to carry out site preparation, up to and including digging a hole for preparation of foundation, but not forming or pouring concrete or anything that would constitute construction. But site preparation, including excavation, is permitted.
Okay, thank you. Which leads me to my next question, and that's probably through to environmental. There has indeed been considerable soil removal, blasting of the foundation. I'm wondering if before any of these monies are, what's the process for allowing these monies to be, to be flowed to the developer? Are we looking for an MOE confirmation of appropriate soil disposal? Are we looking indeed at the borehole information to assure ourselves that, that we're spending good money for brownfield revitalization?
Through you, Mayor Garrettson. The process for flowing the money is, there's a two-step process. Initially, there's a tax cancellation, which is a cancellation of property taxes and education taxes for the period of the development that's referred to as the rehabilitation period, and that's designed to cover the period when the developer is remediating the site and developing the property. And that generally ends at occupancy, and that is just cancellation of the existing taxes. The second and most significant benefit is the rebate of property taxes that gets paid after the property has been redeveloped, occupied, and reassessed by MPAC. And those rebates cannot flow until a bylaw has been presented to council. And those rebates cannot flow until a bylaw has been presented to council and approved by council authorizing those rebates to happen. And that won't happen until the developer has provided the Ministry of the Environment and the City of Kingston with a document called a Record of Site Condition, which is a document described under provincial regulation that is signed by a professional engineer qualified in, in the field of environmental remediation that describes that the property as remediated is suitable and safe for its intended use.
And, and receipts would be part of that process?
Yes, I should have also mentioned that the, the process before tax rebates can happen, the developer has to provide audited statements of actual costs incurred. So the costs that are before you tonight are estimates. And once the actual costs are known, the developer will provide those along with an audited statement, and the city will scrutinize those.
Thank you, I've been educated. Thank you very much.
Councilor Downs?
Just specifically then, because under this policy, in my opinion, it's a good policy, but it does give significant benefits to the developer to remediate the site. So the specific question is, you dig up the contaminated soil, you load it onto a truck, you send it to a safe site, I'm not sure what the site is called, I think it's called a safe site. So are you saying that the city looks on an audited statement to prove that that soil that has been dug up has been sent to the safe site? Is that part of the auditing process?
Mr. McClatchy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have the ability to request receipts and papers called waybills that would demonstrate that loads of contaminated material were indeed picked up and hauled by a licensed hauler and deposited at a licensed disposal facility, and that the costs for those were in order.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Glover?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. I have one question that may hinge either on a misunderstanding of law or ultimately a misunderstanding of some information in the report. Two thousand and three, two thousand and four timeframe, when Block D was under development, my understanding of the law at that time was that the Brownfields incentive plan was only available if the property owner that was responsible for the contamination, with Block D, it was, it was the locomotive's work, was not available for any sort of recourse. And I wonder if that has changed, because the possible point of misunderstanding is that the report speaks repeatedly of Ogilvy Realty Limited Bracket Toyota, which suggests that there is still a corporate connection with the probable source, property owner's source of contamination, who is now asking for city assistance through tax relief and rebates to be cleaning up rather than being held responsible themselves. Has the law changed, or have I misread, or is there some other factor there?
Through you, Mayor Garretson. I'm going to refer the law question to, to Mr. Linscott, but I would say that the Phase One information, Phase One environmental site information that was provided to the city by the developer as a requirement of the application did illustrate a number of previous uses on the site. And we didn't, and we don't, make an effort to try and determine which contamination was attributable to which previous use. So while some of it may have been attributable, attributable to the most recent previous use, some of it may also have been other previous uses. But I would, I would refer the legal question to Mr. Linscott.
Mr. Linscott.
There is, there is no legal requirement under the provincial legislation that allows us to establish a community improvement plan and then a Brownfields program within that that requires us to attempt to, or to make Brownfields funding conditional on an attempt to recover costs from, from the original polluters. I'm, I'm not sure what, what the recollection is in terms of Block D. I, I don't recall that myself, but I certainly haven't looked at that file in, in some period of time. But we're not legally obligated to do that, and our policy established by council doesn't require us to do that either.
So if I can ask a follow-up then with respect to the city policy, presumably crafted within the framework of provincial enabling legislation, does that mean that our policy would permit a company which has polluted a site to turn around and apply to us for tax relief under the Community Improvement Plan, our Brownfields process, to help to pay for the cleanup of that site?
Your worship, maybe I can respond to that initially, and if Mr. McClatchy has anything to add. There's nothing that would prevent an owner who was the polluter from applying to the program. The program that the city has established is very clear that it's entirely at the discretion of council, so council does not have to provide funding. In a case of, of a black and white case of an owner who was the polluter then looking for Brownfields incentives, I, I could understand why, why the city would not be favorable to that. I don't have the details about this site. I do recall Mr. McClatchy mentioned a minute ago that there were, from materials filed with the city, the suggestion that there was contamination arising over a fairly lengthy period of time from a number of previous activities, not all of which would be related to, to any of the current ownership group.
Just a comment then, Mayor Garretson, given the complexity of the site and the potential that we might in part be rewarding a current polluter, I regret that a more detailed analysis of the, of the pollutants, probable sources and timeframes was not able to be done when the report was being forwarded for our consideration.
Anybody else on this? Did you have something to add, Mr. McClatchy?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The only other thing I wanted to point out was the nature of the benefit that's provided through this program. It's a tax rebate that is back-ended on the development. There's no upfront money aside from a relatively small initial study grant that's provided to the developer. The developer has to expend considerable monies in developing and cleaning up the site before any of these tax, and pay their property taxes before these rebates flow back to them. So there's certainly no benefit in trying to increase the, the degree to which a remediation needs to take place.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I just, I want to make sure I understand how this works, because it's for a million five, potentially, potentially, it's for a 1.5 million. The part, I can see where the rebate part comes in, because they take the cost and rebate back to them. The annual amount directed at municipal Brownfield Reserve Fund is 20%. Who pays that? That's what's not clear to me. Is that, is the proponent paying that eventually, or are we paying it on their behalf, or how does that work?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The 20% that goes to the, sorry, Environmental Reserve Fund, that's, that's paid from the property taxes that are paid to the city from the land. So when the property taxes are paid, 20% of that payment goes to the, the Environmental Reserve Fund, and the 80% goes towards the rebate until the eligible costs have been paid off.
So that's roughly what the proponent would be paying, give or take, for the duration of the program, or 10 years, whatever comes first, I guess?
In this situation-
That's what I think I read.
In this situation, given the estimate of eligible costs and the estimate of post-development MPAC assessment, we're estimating, I think, something in the order of 8.2, is it, 8.4 years of rebate? That could be less.
So I'll call the question on this. That carries. Report eighty-eight from the Planning Committee.
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to present report number eighty-eight from the Planning Committee, as it be received and adopted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Patterson, seconded by Councilor Bragg, that report number eighty-eight from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
I'm going to already separate item two because I'm going to declare pecuniary interest, and I'm going to separate item three for the same reason at this time, so I'll add that to my pecuniary interest. That is item three of the same report. Would anybody like to separate one or four? One, okay, so they're all going to be, we'll deal with them, one, and then two and three together, and then four. So item one, application for site plan control, 740 Augusta Drive, Council, oh, was that Councilor Downs?
Thank you, your worship, as district councillor. I, I first of all want to thank council for the bump up. I, as district councillor, I'm very appreciative for what happened, and I also want to acknowledge the Chair of Planning, Council Patterson, for his facilitating that bump up. I, I had a, a meeting between constituents and the developer before the, the issue came to council, and there was, I think, a good conversation, a good conversation that allowed the people who live in the neighborhood to say, sometimes in a very blunt way, to the developer that they're concerned about, about the development. And I think it was, it was a very good discussion. I, tonight I'm going to stand in solidarity with my constituents. I think that in that particular neighborhood, in that particular area of the city, in my opinion, cars are literally taking over the neighborhood. And this neighborhood, and if you look at the design of the homes there, the narrower lots, the neighborhood was designed for walkability, for cycling, for kids playing in the park, for people to walk to do their groceries and, and that sort of thing. And I just feel that the car, just generally speaking, has taken over the neighborhood, and it has compromised, that fact has compromised public safety. It's, it's difficult for the kids who live in the neighborhood, eventually when Burt Munier Common is finished, it's going to be difficult for them to cross the road in a safe way to get to the park to play. There have been in, cut, cut-ins into the boulevards to facilitate, what? Well, more parking of cars, so that kids will be running between parked cars to get to the, to get to the park. So the reason why, the, part of the reason why my constituents, or some of my constituents were against this, is that this development is going to create more cars in the neighborhood. So I think that some good has come of it. And I must say that the fact that, that the people who live in the neighborhood, who by the way know the best about the traffic circulation in the neighborhood, they know the best because they live there, the good that has come of it is that although this issue has come to planning, has been approved by planning, there is, in my opinion, a greater awareness by our staff about the traffic issues in the neighborhood. In fact, I made the request of, of planning, when we had the bump up, to have traffic staff at that particular meeting. So I think that there has been a greater awareness of the, of the issue of traffic, and what we really need is more regulation of parking, of traffic, especially on Crossfield Drive. And there have been mitigation measures that have taken place. The signs that tell you what speed you're going to help people slow down. But I think that it's very important for people who, you know, quote-unquote, paid good money for their homes in that neighborhood, anticipating a lifestyle that is going to be, you know, safe, for goodness sakes, for their kids, a lot of young families in that neighborhood. And I just think that although the developer is an excellent developer, I'll say that publicly, I think that he's a, he's an excellent developer, and he constructed many of the homes in the neighborhood. In this particular case, I'm going to stand with my residents, and I will stand with them-
Thirty seconds.
Until, I will stand with them until we, in a very aggressive way, start to take that neighborhood back from people who are screaming down Crossfield Drive, who have taken over public streets with cars by parking, and have really created a different kind of atmosphere in that neighborhood from, from what they thought they were buying, so.
Thank you, Councilor Downs.
So I'd like to thank my constituents for their input, for their-
Thank you.
And-
I gave you the thirty-second warning, I'm sorry, Councilor Downs. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it is appropriate to comment on this item simply because council, of course, saw this on a previous agenda with a request for a bump up. And this is a bump up of the site plan. And I think going forward, that council has to be very careful whenever we are bumping up a site plan. We need to be careful that the issue at hand is a site plan issue. Because in this particular instance, the concerns of the neighbors by and large were with respect to the zoning of the property. And so when we bumped up the site plan, we were giving them a false hope that we could somehow overturn the zoning of that property, which we could not. And so unfortunately, when this came before Planning Committee, the community was very disappointed that after all of this time, and all this effort and, and money that was spent, that in fact, many of their concerns, we were not in a position to address.
I think just as a point of order, Council Patterson, although your point is a valid one, it doesn't really, it addresses the process, not the actual application for the, the resolution that's before us. So if you can, I appreciate what you're saying, but you're addressing the process, not actually what's before us?
I, I understand, I, I certainly take that point. I will simply say that just if we could just flag that for future, I think that would be great, but given that we are only dealing with the site plan that is before us, I think certainly there is no choice but to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, oh, Council, oh, okay, hold on. Council Glover?
Thank you, Mayor Garretson. Councilor Downs in addressing the matter flagged the concern of cars taking over a neighborhood. And the broader issue, of course, cars and their role in the transportation master plan is at the bottom of the list, not the top of the list. I, like Councilor Downs, have a matter which is somewhere within staff at the moment, where cars have been given predominance, i.e. parking- cars are being given predominance, i.e. parking in the front yard, which throughout the 8499 district is not allowed. So again, to help that message, that we've got to be thinking more carefully about the place of cars, I'll be happy to follow Counselor Downs' lead.
So I have some people on the speakers list, but let's just keep our comments, please, with respect to this particular application, not the City of Kingston's overall position on cars versus pedestrians versus everybody else. That is a great discussion to have, however, that's not what is before us right now. So on my list, Counselor Neal?
Thank you. I also was in attendance at that meeting, and it wasn't all exclusively talking about zoning. There was a considerable amount of discussion around parking issues and traffic issues and impact on the neighborhood and the community, which I think, as I understand it, are legitimate concerns in a site plan, to be brought forward at site plan. So I will be supporting the district councillor on this one.
Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I do agree that at the Planning Committee meeting, residents had a different, the hopes of a different outcome in mind, but I do think it was really important to bring 740 Augusta Drive to Planning Committee for site plan, because we saw that the exterior of the building is going to be, you know, stucco, so it's not going to be an ugly exterior, and that totally falls within site plan control. We saw, like, the landscaping plan, which we wouldn't have otherwise unless we wrote to planning staff to get a copy of, so we saw that there is going to be, you know, vegetation, and there's going to be an underground sprinkler system, so the trees aren't, you know, will have a better chance of surviving and providing more of a neighborhood buffer. We saw that traffic calming, you know, is going to be looked at as the development goes up, and, you know, the district councillor can definitely, you know, forward on traffic concerns to staff. So we saw that right in the site plan report, that staff acknowledged they will keep their eye on traffic calming for the neighborhood. I think it was really important to bring this to Planning Committee, bump it up for site plan, because we saw about the fencing, we saw about garbage, we saw about the bike racks, all the things that are site plan, you know, items that fall under site plan that we wouldn't have seen otherwise by just having the zoning, you know, public meetings. So it was important, but I do agree, the residents had the hopes for a different outcome, but we can't expect them to know the ins and outs of the planning process like we have, where we've been breathing it for four years. You know, it's some educational process for residents as well. So I am really glad that this came to site plan. Thank you.
I'll call to question? I'll turn the chair to the deputy mayor for the number two and three. Mr. Mayor?
A point of order, please.
Counselor Glover?
When the mayor was starting discussion on number one, he intimated that two and three would be combined, I did not separate two, because it had been, I would like to separate it, please.
Very good. Number two has been separated. This is application for zoning bylaw amendment for 450 Front Neck Street. Counselor Glover?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is, I think, the third time now that this council, perhaps in this calendar year, have had a request coming forward to make a cellar a habitable space. I think on the previous two occasions, I spoke against it and voted against it, and for the same reason I am now. What started as a trickle, looks like it's becoming a stream, if not a river, if not a flood. I think there's a clear need for a city policy, because de facto, we've set aside the existing policy, cellars are not habitable. I think there's a clear need to move on that very quickly, and until such time as we do, I'll be happy to vote against making cellars habitable space.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Neal?
Yes, I wasn't always of the opinion. I shared the same concerns that Counselor Glover has cited, but as I understand it, from every question on this topic I've ever asked of our planning staff and of our property standards, building staff, the, it was something, and Planning may want to comment on this, it was something of an arbitrary definition that we had of what a cellar was, and what is being proposed with these is a redevelopment under our secondary suite policy that indeed addresses the height concerns, the entrance egress concerns, the light concerns with enlarged windows when necessary. And I guess my concern is, and I know that the previous speaker would agree with this, there are far too many illegal cellar apartments in the core of the city where people are paying exorbitant rents and not living in very good quarters. And by allowing the appropriate request in order to convert a cellar into a unit that indeed meets all of the building code and all of the quality requirements, I think may help us to get some people out of substandard illegal units and into others. And I think, now that this is part of our policy, we should be very aggressively looking at unappropriately zoned cellar, existing cellar apartments, and force landlords to reinvest in their property and to appropriately convert them. So I, it took me a while to get my head around this, and, but I indeed will be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Bain. Last night, we had a meeting with Utilities Kingston, who talked about Williamsville, and, you know, their sewer capacity, being at capacity in the Williamsville area. So Utilities Kingston looked at this application, did they, Mr. Bain? Because I remember it as going from four bedrooms to eight bedrooms, giving this zoning approval, and they're fine with the increased capacity. I just wonder if Utilities Kingston is keeping track of all these, you know, conversions of cellar space, as that would definitely be putting more capacity on the sewage system.
Mr. Bain?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In response to the question, Utilities Kingston was circulated on this application and had no concerns with the proposal.
Thank you. With that, we will call to question. We're just waiting on one. Okay, and that is Carried, thank you. Number three is approval of an application for an initial study grant for the Community Improvement Plan, Brownfields Project Area 1C, 579 601, 605, and 611 Princess Street, and 510 Front Neck Street. Okay, seeing no desire for discussion or debate, we'll call to question. And that's Carried. Okay, number four, central accommodation review regulating the number of bedrooms per residential dwelling unit, status update on other Ontario municipalities. Counselor Glover?
A question of staff, if I may please, very interesting report, delighted to see it. Several questions were laid out as questions that need to be addressed within the Kingston timeframe. Excuse me, there's also a comment on a report, I think next year, with next steps. Is it thought that the questions that need to be addressed within the Kingston timeframe will not be addressed until the next steps report of next year? Or is there some idea of when and how they might be handled in a shorter timeframe?
Mr. Bain?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The expectation of staff is that we would be bringing forward a fulsome report on the central accommodation review to council, Planning Committee and council, this fall. I don't have a date I can offer at this point, but that is our expectation. There has been a number of reports